Welcome. I want to say hello to everyone who's joining us today for the City Council Business Meeting. We're thawing out and it's good to see everybody's faces. Hopefully you're recovering from the big storm last week. Here to start us with our meeting invocation today is Greg Dow from Central Church of Christ. Greg, thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Mayor. It is always an honor to lead a prayer for our city. I'd like to offer a prayer this morning that first considers those who are still struggling, who are suffering either from COVID or this recent weather event, and then a prayer in gratitude for our city leaders and a prayer for the season of Lent. So if you would bow with me, please. Father, we pray that you comfort those who are suffering, those who have suffered illness, experienced death in their family, those who are dealing with economic struggles. Father, our prayer is for mercy for them. Please have mercy. Spirit, we reach out to you and we want to lift up our city officials and we pray that you fill them with courage, discernment, and compassion. Father, we are thankful for their leadership, especially during these times. And then Jesus, you've known us from the beginning of time. You've known us in the depths of our dreams and in the darkness of our shame. You know us as your beloved. Help us to own this core identity more and more in this season of repentance and mercy. Give us the rock-solid assurance of your unfailing faith in us as we seek the same in you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Greg. We really appreciate your coming to start our meeting off.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on our agenda is an announcement about a new employee. Mr. City Manager?
All right, Mayor. Thank you very much. We have with us today on the call, and I have to find my bio, Stephanie Rodarte Chuto. She is the new Assistant Director of Community Development. She's got a bachelor's degree in communications from WT. She spent 17 years in the classroom teaching and coaching speech and debate. And during the summer, she coordinated the Independence Day celebration events for the Canyon Chamber of Commerce. So she's a local person. She knows our people. She's grown up here. She's educated here and she's worked here beyond her professional pursuits. She's a proponent for others through her involvement in local and national organizations and through coordination of advocacy events that engage, give voice to, and educate the public about human issues. She brings a passion for people to the city of Amarillo, to our organization, and to every mission that the Community Development Department does. She can be a huge resource to Jason Rillsberger and the rest of the team there. So I just wanted to say, and there she is right there, Stephanie, welcome to the organization. Council, please feel free to say hi. And Stephanie, do you have anything to say before we do that?
Just, I'm so grateful to be here and I'm excited for the opportunity to work with the Community Development Department and to make a really positive impact in the city. So thank you so much.
Awesome.
Welcome. Agreed. These are the moments I wish we were, really wish we were still doing in-person meetings because we do all want you to feel welcome here. And we love having another WT buff on staff. That's great. So the work y'all are doing at CDBG is so important and we just appreciate that work. And we're glad to have you, Stephanie.
Yes, welcome, Stephanie.
Welcome to Amarillo.
All right. Well, moving on then to the public address portion of our meeting today, I'll ask the call host, Stephanie, do we have anybody who's registered for public address?
Mayor, we did not have anybody sign up today.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to Agenda Item 1A is reviewing the agenda for the regular meeting and any of your attachments. Council, do you have questions just on the front end about anything that was in your packet? I've got a question about something that's on our consent agenda with regard to, we've got a second reading for the illegal dumping ordinance. And I've had a citizen ask me, what would be our approach in issuing those citations? So their concern was if their alley gets dumped in, are they as the homeowner now liable to be cited because the alley is dirty, even though they didn't do the dumping illegally? So I wondered, Jared, do you have some response to that?
Yes, ma'am. The purpose of this ordinance is to facilitate and enable the city to cite the people that are doing the dumping, not the person with the dumping that happens to be behind their house because we have no way to demonstrate that that person did it. All right, our ordinance is already would provide us the ability, if we so chose, to cite those people, but we know that they didn't do the illegal dumping in almost every case. So what this does is enable the city to enforce against the person that actually does the dumping. And that's why we've installed in a number of our alleys cameras that can pick up that activity taking place. And we will be able to move those to different locations. But the entire purpose of this ordinance is to enable the city to enforce illegal dumping on the people that are doing the illegal dumping, not the person that receives the illegal dumping.
Okay, that's good clarification. I thought that was the answer, but I thought it was important for us to go ahead and address that.
And Mayor, I just wanted to add that, you know, it's one of the reasons why the city hasn't taken steps in the past to have an ordinance to actually impose fines because it is hard to identify who was actually responsible and not just the location. So it really goes hand in hand with the implementation, adding the cameras that makes us able to actually identify who the lawbreakers were and attach it to the right individual.
Good, thank you. Okay, any other, if there's nothing else, we'll move on then to Agenda Item 1B, a coronavirus update. Mr. Miller?
Mayor, we've got our Director of Public Health, Casey Stotin, to give us the latest on what's going on at public health. We have received our allocation of, well, Casey, why don't you tell us everything that's going on at public health? I mean, with regard to coronavirus.
Sure, I can. As Jared was saying, we have received our vaccine allocation for this week. So this morning, we received another 5,000 first doses and our 5,000 second doses that we expect. So we will be giving vaccine to those people who qualify. So if you're in 1A, 1B, please come see us. And we'll talk about all of those numbers and everything. We have a lot of numbers to talk about, so get ready. Lot of numbers to talk about today. We'll try to make it quick and smooth, but there will be some numbers. So as of Monday, there were a total of, sorry, as of this morning, there were a total of 39,933 total cases of COVID-19 reported in Potter and Randall Counties, 16,791 cases in Potter County, and 16,142 cases in Randall County. We have a total of 31,406 recoveries and we are up to 670 deaths reported in our community. That leaves us with 857 active cases. So our active cases are now down below 1,000. Each of the cases do represent a unique individual. Yesterday, our GA 32's hospitalization percentage was at 6.1%. That means that 6.1% of all hospitalized patients have COVID-19. Our RAC region is no longer considered an area of high hospitalization and we have moved to status level orange. However, to maintain these levels and to remain at these levels, we must remain vigilant, wearing our masks, socially distancing, and staying home when we're sick, good hand washing, and being vaccinated when your group is called is the only way that we will stay at this level. Locally, there are 46 people hospitalized with COVID-19. Adult bed utilization is at 73.5%. ICU utilization is at 65% and ventilator utilization is at 22.5%. The rolling seven-day positivity rate is currently at 4% and the positivity rate at the drive-through testing site, which is a subset of the total, is at 22%. The five-day new case average is 49 new cases per day. So the numbers are definitely trending in the right direction. Couldn't be more pleased about that. Definitely can't let our guard down. Masking is just as important as ever, as well as those vaccinations and the other public health measures that have been in place. As far as public health operations, though, the public health drive-through testing site does remain operational. Individuals can call 378-6300 to be screened and directed to the test site. We have reduced the hours at the test site from, instead of eight to three, we're now running eight to noon so that we can pull those staff over to the vaccination clinic to help with staffing there. The outpatient Bamlanivimab infusion center is operational and accepting referrals from local providers for patients who do meet that EUA criteria. And we have seen so far 148 patients requiring, and only four of those patients have required hospitalization. The vaccination clinic is also operational and to date, Amarillo Public Health has given 41,268 first doses and 19,823 second doses of the received 76,950 total doses. Today will be open until seven. So like I said, if you're in one of those 1A or 1B groups, like a healthcare worker, someone who's 65 and older, or someone who's 18 and over with a chronic healthcare condition, please come see us. Someone's coming for their second dose, as a reminder, please bring their card. I know we've had a lot of numbers so far, but just a few more, so hang with me. We have some provisional data on our vaccination clinic. We have a lot of data sources that we're working through and our staff are doing QI. So provisionally, 77% of the vaccine has been given to people who have a Potter-Randal address, who live in Potter or Randall County. 93% of the vaccine has been given to people who live in the Texas Panhandle and only around 6% of the vaccine has been given to people who live outside of the Texas Panhandle. So definitely, we're vaccinating people who live right here at home. You know, Amarillo is certainly the capital of the Panhandle and we're really glad to be able to serve our entire community, you know, outside of Amarillo itself, but certainly vaccinating people who live right here at home. I expect the numbers to adjust slightly as additional data is added and QI is completed, or is continuous. We always do QI. With all of that information, the take-home message is that we are thankful. We're thankful for the support of our community. They have come to be vaccinated and are supporting our team in big ways. We have had incredibly generous donations, gifts of gratitude, snack pack for snack pack, Young Bloods, the Big Texan, Faith Builder Sunday School class at Hillside Christian Church, Emerald National Bank, Happy State Bank, and individuals who have provided donuts and water and snacks. Between the generosity of our community and the hard-working dedication of our city staff, that's what makes our Amarillo Clinic so successful and Amarillo itself so successful. So I just want to say thank you to our community. And don't forget your mask when you get out of the car. So lots of good things happening. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Casey, on the topic of masks, would you clarify? Because I have had citizens say, we're no longer required to wear masks, right? Now that we're in yellow, would you talk about that and just how, I know the message is confusing. We've changed back to yellow, but where does that leave us under the governor's orders? And what should citizens be doing if they're indoors, wear a mask or not wear a mask?
Yes, and just want to clarify, we're in orange?
Oh, I said yellow, sorry. Yes, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, so we're in orange. And so, yes, we still definitely need to wear a mask. And so if you're inside, definitely wear a mask. If you're outside and you're within six feet of somebody else and even if, you know, if you're within, in a closed space and you're still, you know, that distance is six feet, but you're in a closed space, like a room, it's a good idea to still have your mask on. So definitely want to wear your mask. Socially distancing and good hand washing are super important. But yes, the mask requirement has certainly not gone away. The governor's order still, I think it's GA 29, is still in effect. So we still have to wear our masks and then we still have the, just the requirements in place to wear our masking.
Thank you. Other questions for Casey? Elaine, I see you talking. We can't hear you. I do that all the time.
Trying that fancy little, you know, spacebar trick that Eddie showed me and it wasn't working. But my question, Casey, was on the GA 29, that governor's order, did that have any connection to numbers? Or is it just a blanket statewide mask mandate, isn't it? And it has nothing to do with our numbers or what color code we may be at as a city?
Right. It's just, it is in effect. It doesn't, it is not tied to a metric, which is appropriate. I mean, you know, it's, the virus doesn't know what number we have assigned to it or what color we have assigned to it. And so, you know, we still need to wear our masks so that we, so that we don't, we don't move back and forth between our assigned numbers and colors. You know, I think they certainly give us a situational awareness about where we are in our community, but we can so easily slip back into those higher levels if we don't take the precautions.
There's a question with our vaccination hours this week. So today's Tuesday. And so just for the rest of the week, do you mind restating kind of the hours that the Civic Center is open? And I know that kind of depends upon how many people show up. With the number we have of the 5,000 doses that arrive for first doses, do you think that will last based on what y'all have seen on demand through the end of the week?
Yes, and that 5,000 doses, that's just what we received this morning, but we still have, you know, a few, some doses left over. So that's, we just added that to our, the doses that we currently had in our refrigerators and freezers. And so we are sitting pretty well this week. We, so today, Tuesday, will be open until seven. And then the rest of the week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, will be open from nine until 5:00 PM here at the Civic Center. And you come in entrance three. That's the very north entrance.
And Casey, I'm sorry, Eddie, go ahead.
The only question that I have is, and it's a question that I bet Casey can't answer. So if she can, then she really is a rock star. I'm sorry, Casey.
My fingers are crossed.
Okay, so we've got 33,000 cases in the city of Amarillo or in Potter-Randal County. And we've got 41,268 first time that have received their first vaccination. So of that 33,000, how many of those, do you have any idea how many people have come through that have had COVID that are, that have taken the vaccination?
You know, I can't answer that question exactly. You're right, that's a tough one. We'd have to do some serious data overlay, but I do know that we have had some. So that's a great question that people have asked us. They've asked, you know, well, I've had COVID, I don't need the vaccine, or I've had COVID, can I get the vaccine? And the answer is yes. So the current guidance says that if you have had COVID, you can defer your vaccine for up to 90 days. But you don't have to. So you can be vaccinated. If you're in that 1A or 1B group, you can be vaccinated as soon as you have recovered, you're outside of your isolation quarantine period, and you're no longer contagious. There's not a minimum, that minimum time is just after recovery. But you can defer for up to 90 days because you would have some of that protection, that natural protection left, but you do not have to.
Well, the only reason I'm kind of asking that is because, you know, that whole thing ends up coming up. You know, you start talking about herd immunity. And so if nobody that's had COVID is getting vaccinated, then that 41,000 plus 33,000 is basically accounts for about 29% of the Potter-Randal potential population of 255,000. And I know that that's an unrealistic figure, but you know, I know that there's always that talk about, when does that point come? When we finally reach herd immunity and that's somewhere between 70 and 85%? And so I was just curious if there was, I know that would be, that would probably be a pretty big question to be asking everybody that walked in. But I was just curious if you had any ideas.
Yeah, it's probably like a Venn diagram. You know, there's probably some, you know, some overlay of those two circles. Just kind of depends on how big that middle circle is or where that overlay is.
So that was just a speculative question. So thanks for humoring me for the moment.
Casey, do you know what percentage of our population that falls in the high-risk category has been vaccinated? As opposed to looking at our full population, looking at the breakdown per age group?
So I would have, I would have to look and see, you know, get, and get kind of all of those numbers. But right now, all of the people that have been vaccinated would be in that high-risk group. You know, they're all healthcare workers, people over 65, or people who have a chronic healthcare condition. So they should all be in that high-risk group.
Right. So I guess if, maybe like in two weeks of just gathering that number of what that is on the percentage of the whole group in that. So you make a great point. It's like right now, 100% of that group falls in the high-risk. And to find out kind of what percentage of our high-risk group, I'm hoping it's pretty high, that the percentage of our high-risk group, we're getting, you know, a pretty high percentage that has been.
I think our, all we've been able to do to date in, with regard to estimating, how many people do we have in our two-county area in our public health district fall into categories 1A and 1B? That's an estimate because there's a lot of that we don't know. You know, we don't know how many people not 65 and older, you know, present with underlying medical conditions. So we've kind of estimated the number of 1As and the number of 65-plus. Mayor, I think we had that roughly about.
I think it's 57,000 coming off the DSHS website.
So 67,000 roughly. So we can calculate as a function of that number, what the number of first vaccinations that we've given is as a percentage.
And I'll look to see if they've updated any of that information.
A follow-up to something that Eddie was bringing up. Something I learned at the blood drive last week was that they are definitely looking for individuals who have already had COVID and have not been vaccinated yet. That to be able to donate the convalescent plasma, you have to fall in that category to have had COVID but not taken your vaccine yet. So to our community, if you fall in that range, it's a very niche area that they are looking for donations.
And then Casey, would you just give us an update on what are the requirements? The state of Texas has chosen to set up a hub model for vaccinating the population. What are the requirements for being a hub and how does that affect who we can turn away or residency requirements for vaccines?
Absolutely. That's a great question. So the hub providers agree to vaccinate people in that 1A and 1B category. They vaccinate, they agree to vaccinate people regardless of where they live. And they vaccinate equitably in the hardest-hit areas and demographics, use all of the doses each week, and promptly report the doses administered.
Okay, thank you. And we are a hub clinic, right? Just want to clarify that.
Yes, ma'am. We are a hub clinic. And we have, you know, all of those things we are trying to do to the very, you know, and we are successful in doing all of those things. I think it's amazing to know that the promptly reporting the doses administered into MTRAC. You know, we have a team of people who are entering all of that data and there, we have, you know, a 24-hour deadline to get all of that entered. And they're, they're really keeping up with it. So they're getting everything entered usually within 24, sometimes 36 hours. But we are, we really have a fast turnaround time on data entry.
Have we had to waste any of our vaccines? Just, you know, it gets to be the end of the day and?
No. So we have, with our banding system and the way that we are counting and accounting and tracking everything, then we really, we try to use everything. We do use everything before the end of the clinic day.
So just to clarify, we have not had to throw away or waste any vaccines that we've been sent?
No.
That's great.
One more question on the RAC nurses. So I know that that number is dropping, the number of RAC nurses that we have. But I know every morning when I drive, I go by the, I basically go by the UA cinema. There's, you know, there's like 10 buses that are there that are basically for the RAC nurses. And so there's still, there's not near as many buses as there were before. So I assume we still have some RAC nurses here. Is that about to go away? Do we know what the governor has planned on that? Or is his office in charge of where those go? How does all of that end up working? Where do we stand with that?
So those are, those are great questions, too. These nurses are assigned to us through BCFS, a disaster response team. And so they're assigned through a little bit of a different route than just straight through the RAC. And so we are working with the state on their continued mobilization through us. And so we have the 25 and we anticipate they're, they're staying with us for at least a little while. You know, they're on two-week assignments. And so we re-request that every, at least every two weeks, if not longer. And so we've been very fortunate and we really appreciate the state's support in that area.
So you've got 25 that work the vaccination clinic. And then there's a large number that are actually working the hospitals, right?
Right, and there's two separate groups. No, so the RAC nurses, they have, they have been working on demobilization of that group. And I think that over the last three weeks that they have reached what their intended target was. And so they're going to kind of slow down a little bit on demo. But the nurses that are assisting us is through BCFS. And so it's a little bit of a different channel.
Okay.
Any other questions for Casey? Howard?
Yes. I'll try to stump you like Eddie did. What, you know, it's voluntary to get a vaccine. Do you know what percentage are not wanting to be vaccinated?
Y'all are really asking tough questions. I don't know that. I think that, you know, as time moves on, I think that people who may have been a little hesitant at the very beginning, like maybe in December or January, are seeing the success of the vaccine and its safety and its efficacy is really playing out. And so my hope is that people who have been hesitant will decide when their group is called or now that their group has been called, since we're in the 1B category, that they will choose to be vaccinated. I know I breathed a kind of a sigh of relief whenever I received my second dose. And so I'm still going to wear my mask. I don't sleep in it, but it's close. But I, but I did just kind of breathe a sigh of relief whenever I got my second dose. And so I know that I want that for other people, for them. And so I know that I, I want that for other people, for them to be protected because it's so important. You know, we've lost six hundred and seventy people in our community and that is six hundred and seventy too many. And so I, I want that same protection for, for everyone here in our community.
Well, you did good on answering that. Let me ask you another question. After we get ninety eight percent of the people that want to be vaccinated, they're in one A and one B, are we going to go to the other people between less than sixty five?
That's a great question too. The states, the evac team, the expert vaccine allocation panel is, is working on that now on what one C will look like. And I don't, I think it will look more like a wave as opposed to like a hard stop. So, you know, kind of once, like at some point, you know, they'll kind of look like waves of different, of different groups. As opposed like we have, we have to get to a certain point and then we can move on to the next group. But there's eight point four million Texans that are in group one B. And so there is, you know, there's a lot of folks that do qualify. And so I know that the evac committee is working on that definition of what one C will look like. And so when it's, when that information has been published and the state of Texas is ready to move on to that one C category, I know that we'll be ready to serve and we hope that we have a lot of people in that one C group who are ready to be vaccinated.
So does this group that you have, that you're on the, the evaluation committee? So, you know, you read stuff in the paper all the time or I, I'm going to use the word the paper. I, I don't, I, I don't know the last time I actually saw a physical newspaper, but and all the different things that you, that you can read. So I've seen that Kentucky and Oregon both are starting to vaccinate their teachers. And I know that that's outside of the one A, one B deal. And so I assume that that would probably be one C. But you guys will have that opportunity of, because that, that's one, you know, I've, I see, I see teachers coming into my office all the time and talking about it. And I, and I know that if they're not, if, if they don't have a comorbidity that gets them in the door, you know, I, I've got a number of them that are chomping at the bits, just waiting for that opportunity. Because like, I was like you, when I got my second one, I breathed a sigh of relief because I knew that I felt, you know, relatively protected at this point in time, actually better than relatively protected. I felt, I felt really good about my protection. And so, and I know that they're kind of waiting for that. So are you guys going to be given, are you guys given that kind of leeway of saying, okay, yeah, we're going to make for sure the teachers are like at the top of one C. Just as soon as we get that part of it, they're going to become available. Is that the kind of thing that you all will have control over?
So the discussions are very robust. You know, everyone on the team has, has an opinion and has the ability to, to advocate and to share that. It's a, it's, it has been a really great team and a, and a great committee to serve on. Because every does have, like, has, has that opportunity to share why they think and why they believe that, you know, that a certain, a certain decision should be made. It also, we come together and we, we vote and we, we make those decisions in a very fair and democratic way. And so it's nice that, that that is, the committee is, is, it's a larger group. So it's not, and it's a very wide, there's a wide range of people on that committee. And so there's a lot of perspective and a lot of science. So it's, there's, we're, you know, trying to very closely follow the epidemiology of, of the, of the pandemic and what is happening in Texas and what's happening across the country. And so really trying to follow all of that science and then to know kind of where, where that supply needs to go next. And so it's really been good to be part of that group and to be part of the team that can advocate for different pieces of that puzzle. So it's not been easy, but it has been good.
Well, in that, in that light, I just want to tell you that I am so grateful you're on that committee. I love your heart. I, I love your mind and the way that you are thinking through these things and your compassion. And I'm grateful that you're on that committee. And if everybody's got the same kinds of characteristics that you have, then I know that our decisions are going to be really well handled. And so, Casey, I just want to tell you, I'm very grateful for everything that you're doing.
Well said. Anything else? Okay, Casey, thank you. Jared, anything else on that?
A man.
Hey, item one C is to discuss animal management and welfare, a proposed breeder's ordinance. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. We have a, a draft breeder's ordinance that has been through our animal management board, advisory board. We have new, well, I'll just call her Director of Animal Management and Welfare, Victoria Medley. Because at some point you got to get rid of the new, so let's just do it now. Victoria?
Okay. And I think Stephanie has the PowerPoint. Okay, so we have met twice and, and our interim director, Rob Shern, was with us on both of those initial meets with our advisory board. And we have been able to kind of revise it, look at it and make it much more simplified, less kind of punitive type ordinance. There's been a lot of discussion, I think, in the last few years about it. So I think this one is, is finally kind of hit the mark where we were really trying to address some of the issues that we were seeing. Basically, with the breeder's ordinance, or the reason that we're needing one is the state law regulates large, you know, breeding type where there's a lot of animals operations, but nothing regarding small breeding operations. So this new one is going to ensure that all the animals and the quality of life for our community are addressed at the same time. You know, we understand that one part is a, a person's business and, you know, they have some rights. And oscillate, and this ordinance also is going to make sure that we're addressing like the physical, social and emotional health of the animals while understanding that, well, respecting what was the expectations within our community. So I think the key thing here to understand, and I think there was a, a lot of discussion on what this breeder ordinance meant. This is key to who this is going to affect. The definition in the ordinance says means a person who breeds dogs or cats and transferred possession of more than one litter or, or a part thereof in a twelve month period. I do know that, that our city hall and a lot of community outreach was going on regarding would this affect like our rescues or our, our fosters? And this clearly states it's people who breed for a purpose. So they've done it on purpose. It's not for those people who are fostering animals or our partners in that way. This doesn't affect them. So with that, the requirements for this new breeder's permit is that it'll be an annual fee of a hundred dollars. And within that application, in that fee permit, they're going to have to have, give us a proposed location of where they're going to breed it. So it's the actual location within our city limits. They have to submit plans and designs that address indoor, outdoor cages, pens and enclosed outdoor areas that we'll be able to review to make sure that it's appropriate size for the animals that they plan on breeding and that it's appropriate for the neighborhood that it's in. Advocate can't have surrendered any animals to us in the past two years. And really that's just on that professional level and accountability level to make sure that they have all the processes when they're, within their own business plan to make sure that they're treating the animals correctly and have medical care and the such. You will also have cannot receive no more than three violations under chapter two of our city ordinance in the last two years. I do want to clarify the, that we came up with the three based on the idea that we understand there could be a chance that somebody's animal got out, their own personal animal. And a lot of times if those get out, they'll, that citation can be up to three violations just because maybe they didn't have their collar on or their tags on. So they get three. So we understand that that could happen at one point. But if you have more than that in a two year period, there is some concerns being raised. You also have to provide the vaccine certifications for animal. So if you have two adult animals within your, on your breeding or in your breeding location, they need to make sure and have all the proper certification, medical certifications. And, and it's no less than what we would expect for our own local pet owners. Okay, Steph. Okay, so this is one thing and I, and I highlighted the word here is because the city and AMW is going to have the ability to, to revoke a breeder's permit. But when we say, it's really clear that we need to under, or people need to understand that, that we put the word may. So these are the reasons that we could revoke it. Doesn't mean we have to revoke it. You know, once again, we're really trying to focus on compliance and helping people instead of being punitive in nature. So if a breeder fails to update the information, you know, they've added more animals or they've taken down certain fencing, if they haven't let us know, they could get their permit revoked. If dogs, cats, bark, how create noises that disturb the neighborhood, we also want to make sure that whoever's going to have this kind of breeding situation in that neighborhood that everyone in that community is also, we, we want to make sure that that's fairly addressed to their neighbors. Also, we have indoor, if the indoor or outdoor areas for the dogs and cats are not maintained in a sanitary condition. This is probably one of the biggest things that AMW and our officers and our compliance manager look at. We have to assure that if there's, you know, puppies and, and those kinds of animals in any part of, within our city limits, that they are maintained in a sanitary, clean and healthy environment. If any person reports being scratched or bit by any of the dog or cats within it. And that, once again, this is a may, and we just want to make sure that we're being able to review and address and help any of the breeders that might be having issues. And then finally, if you violate any provisions of our chapter eight dash two, which includes everything that has with our, to do with our animals, one of them being, you know, dangerous dog, if something got out and bit some, bit somebody or the neighbors were having some kinds of issues, the, the dogs were loose, any of the, a number of any of those violations, that could also cause us to revoke the breeder's permit. So I made it quick. Kind of went through there fast because I know these meetings going over, can go long. Is there any questions that any of you guys have regarding it?
Say something real quick, Victoria?
Sure.
Okay, so sitting on the advisory board, here's some things that I, that I would want everybody else that's on the council or for those here in Amarillo to hear out of this deal is, you know, one of the things that was very impressive about this particular ordinance, this breeder's ordinance, is just the fact that if you really read the ordinance pretty close, you find out that really the, the focus is on the animals, actually. And what I mean by the focus is on the animals is I was very impressed to see you've got to have X, Y, and Z. Your cages have got to be a certain way. You've got to provide a certain amount of area. You've got to have a plan that's submitted for how these animals are going to be taken care of if you're going to be a breeder. And so it's, it's basically you've got to submit a business plan. It means that you're serious about the breeding. It means that it's really going to be an up and up thing. The others that are on the advisory board that are, some of them are involved with some of the rescues and different things. They were very impressed with what is going on. As a matter of fact, the annual fee started at twenty five dollars. And, and I didn't say a word about it at all. But very quickly, those that were on the advisory board said, no, that's not enough. Number one, we need to make for sure that we're covering, covering the cost that's required on that. And they're the ones that quickly moved it up to fifty and then on up to a hundred dollars. And I think, I think from everybody that I've talked to, and I've got a couple of people that are involved with rescues that are in my practice, and one of them, one of them I talked to within the past two weeks. And one of them has been a while since I've talked to her. But both of them, they were saying that this is a cornerstone of something that we've got to have here in Amarillo, that we've got to figure out how we're taking care of our animals and overpopulation. And this is a great point with which to start. And that, I, I was just incredibly impressed with the fact of this was really, do you have a business plan? If you're going to breed dogs or cats, do you have a business plan? How are you going to set this up? How are you going to take care of the animals? And so I thought it was, it's really, it's pretty impressive. It really kind of sets, it sets a standard for what we need to be doing. And there are a lot of other cities here in the state that already have a breeder's ordinance in place. And I think everything has been developed from looking at a lot of different plans. And so I think honestly, we've gotten one of the best results out of this personally.
Thank you. Go ahead, Elaine.
Victoria, can you give us some insight on kind of the community engagement up to this point? I know Eddie was talking about from the board and it sounds like definitely from the, the animal side. Kind of where are we on communication with the breeders? And have they had conversations and input into developing this ordinance as well?
Elaine, we did have two separate advisory board meetings that were very clear, that were open to the public for comment. We didn't have anyone sign up for them and they were posted. And as I said, we had the, we had both of them within this, this year so that we could really keep the momentum and keep the discussion, knowing that once you hear something, sometimes, you know, things will fall off in a month or two months. And so we were able to do that and we didn't have any other comments inside of our advisory board meetings. And I do know that when we met with the rescue partners, that it was a discussion that came up with a rescue partner that Rob had hosted and I was there, that it came up about just how do we handle, you know, people who are breeding and making them, holding them accountable so they're not doing it over and over in a year and not getting spayed or neutered and, and it coming back into the shelter. So I think the rescue partners that we had were really clear, as Dr. Sauer said, is saying this is just a foundational thing that we need for the health of our animals in our community.
Do we know how many breeders this might impact? Do we know how many people are active, have?
Right. And that's, right. And that's one of the problems is that we don't have any way right now at all to track it. We don't have a way. So we don't know what's in. Now, we do have people who, you know, could have kennels outside, if they're within our city, but that doesn't mean they're breeding. They could just, you know, be having a business that keeps animals over the weekend. So we really don't have any way of knowing what that's going to look like until we put this into process. And what'll give us a better idea and a better number. And it's really going to help us strategically to understand what we have, what we're dealing with instead of just, you know, supposing we think this out or thinking that this might be one of our culprits. So I think this is one of the things that are going to be able to help us with that.
I think you opened your presentation talking about large versus small. And I think you're talking about large operations and not necessarily large animals or smaller animals. Wanted some clarification on that.
No, that's funny.
Large, how many, you know, litters they might have or something like that?
Right. So right now in the state of Texas, if I recall right, for large, it was ones that had eleven animals or more that they were breeding at a time that the state, that, that the state law refers to. And so under that, there was really nothing there. And that was why when we looked at best practices, had looked at other cities and I'd been able to get ahold of ordinances from other cities. So we could kind of look and adjust and see what other people were doing in the best practices and seeing what was working. And so that's kind of where we came. We were able to kind of cherry pick and fit what was best for our community and what was best that our advisory. was best that our advisory board felt good with. And so I think when Dr. Sauer was saying that, that was kind of the idea.
Victoria, I really expect that these rescue groups will be, they really will be partners in helping us identify breeders and helping us educate citizens that this is a talking point change. Yes, it is a change. It's not so much a revenue generating change for the city. It will take a while for it to even impact our animal population, but it is a great platform for us to educate people about spay and neutering their pets. Because it's, even though it's worded toward people who have the intention of breeding their animals, it also will target all of us that own animals. If we haven't spayed or neutered our animals, we should also do that. Do you agree that that it, with this ordinance, we can move forward in partnering with those animal rescue groups better to begin to identify some of the people that Councilwoman Hayes was wisely asking about?
Um, yeah, I think that's, this is definitely that first step, and just the idea that yes, we understand that people have a business model and they could be responsible people that have it, they're going to do their, you know, they're going to go through these processes. It's those ones who haven't, where we're talking three or four, you know, litters in a year and trying to sell them, and they can't sell them, and they end up surrendering them to us. So I think it's really going to be able to open our eye and see and give us another tool to educate and to help our our community partners, let us know what's going on too, where we're communicating so that we can start really addressing this issue that animals got to be spayed and neutered, or we're not going to get out of our issues with animals.
And so, Victoria, can you just talk to us about what are a citizen's avenues for getting their animal spayed or neutered? And what's the most affordable? Because certainly that's a burden for all of us, thinking about families that want to own a pet, but maybe can't afford to get it spayed or neutered. And is that a, is that a service that we offer at the animal shelter? And how do we price it?
So currently, we we don't operate actually at the shelter, but we do have some local partners, veterinarians that'll get, that we are able to give a reduced fee to get your animal spayed, neutered. The other thing is, is when we're at, when if an animal is picked up and it's a stray or your dog just got loose, and you want to reclaim it, we do have some requirements regarding getting your animal spayed or neutered, what it's going to cost, and us giving them a better ability to get that done within a certain amount of time. So what I would tell, you can call local vets to find out their prices. Also on our website, you can go to our information, we have some information in there regarding agencies and vets that can provide services, not only spade and muter services, but also any kind of small medical needs that an animal might need, and a person might be struggling getting them that service.
Mayor and council, I also wanted to mention that if anybody wants to share information or comment on this, this is not the only opportunity. We're going to have two readings of this, first and second reading. It'll be on the agenda twice for the next two meetings. If unanimous, it won't necessarily be something that council discusses at the second meeting, but it is on the agenda, and the public can comment on it on either one of those agendas. We definitely want to hear input. I know council wants to hear that input if somebody has it. So I want to make sure everyone knows that if there's any desire to address the council on it, or to use all of the other myriad of ways that people can reach out to council, either through calls, internet, email, or online reporting system, there's a lot of ways that people can share their thoughts on this with council prior to council taking any votes.
Victoria, is the new surgery center that we're opening up soon, is that something that you have a vision for the future would provide spay and neuter services to the public? Or that would only be used for animals that are picked up and being, you know, adopted back out?
And so currently, I mean, at the, at the beginning of opening this, we're really definitely going to focus on the ones that we have within our custody, for the lack of a better term, and before we release, release them, that we would be able to do it. But I can tell you, just from researching and looking at other agencies and looking at best practices, one of the things that would probably really help us and where we hope to head to is that everything, every animal that comes out of our shelter can be spayed and neutered. That, and that once we do through partnerships with local vets or with Texas Tech Vet School, that we would be able to provide some of that spade and neutering to our community, our low-income community or people who are just struggling, understanding how to do that, where to do it. So yes, definitely, long-term, I think that's one of the things that we could really look at and see our community partnership with, like I said, our local agencies and the Texas Tech Vet School.
And Mr. City Manager, can you tell us where this ordinance, where the public could go to to review that, to be able to read it, and be prepared for those next two meetings, where that would be posted?
Victoria, I don't know if it's posted on the AMW website or not. Victoria, is that, is that the case right now?
It is not, but it can easily be posted onto our webpage.
We'll get that posted up on the AMW webpage immediately or today, hopefully. And we'll also have it available on the packets for both of the upcoming meetings.
Good question.
Got one question.
Yes, sir.
Victoria, if we adopt this ordinance, what will this accomplish for the city one year from now, two years, five years, 10 years from now?
So, you know, hopefully, what we would look at and why we would want to do something like this is that within a year to two years, that we have this level of accountability that people understand there is a difference between this being a business model and then people just, for the lack of a better term, trying to make some quick money and dumping our community with unwanted puppies. So as we do this, is it, within a year, could I, could we say we'd see, you know, complete turnaround? Absolutely not. This, this problem has been created for a very long time here in Amarillo regarding our spay and neutering. This is just one of those tools to the step towards getting the education and holding some of our, our local citizens accountable.
It also provides a framework, like, like Victoria said, for responsible breeders to do, to continue doing. We don't, you know, the target is not responsible breeding. It does provide a framework for those responsible breeders to work, but it really, more than anything else, gives us the tools we need to be able to address the very irresponsible situations that we find in in many backyard breeding situations, where people are just, like, like Victoria said, breeding for a quick buck, not caring about the the health or futures of the animals, not caring about the impact they're having on our community, or the challenges that that unrestricted irresponsible breeding has on the Animal Management and Welfare Center itself.
Thank you.
From the way that I've kind of seen this is it's kind of like, we're going down this road, and we've hit a Y, and we've got to make a decision on which way we're going to go. And by doing this ordinance, it's kind of like, you know, that Y, you can see the road next to you for a period of time, and it takes a while before there's enough separation that you go, oh, wow, we're going in a completely other direction. But I think this is one of these major whys. It's a major fork in the road that we're coming up to that gives us the opportunity to help animal management and welfare go back to that position where we need for them to be.
And Victoria, whenever, it sounds like we're going to be seeing you again in a couple of weeks, and if possible, at that time, before we would be voting on this ordinance, if we could get an update on the, just the numbers, kind of of the, our per capita, I know in the past, when we first began looking at this a couple of years ago, our surrender numbers for our population are just really high. And so just if we could just get kind of a little bit more current data of how our surrender numbers compared to our population numbers to other cities.
Um, yes, we can do that, and I would like to just remind too, the council at any time, or our citizens at any time, they can go on our website. And we have a daily report card that says exactly how many surrenders we have daily, be it surrenders that we get from out in the field or surrenders that we get at our public access office there at the shelter. So we can definitely pull those numbers, but like I'd say, that is something that anybody can can view on a daily, daily basis.
Any other questions for Victoria? Well, if she was new and shiny when she started today, I think we are beginning to break her in, and I, I don't think, Victoria, none of us think of you as new and shiny. We think of you as experienced and dependable because you've been at the city for a long time, and your leadership is strong, and we're glad to have it at AMW. It's a very important department in the city, and you're casting a vision and executing great changes over there. So we look forward to seeing this ordinance on our agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. Next item then is item 1D, which is discuss tri-state master plan. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, we have Andrew Freeman to managing director of, managing, one of our managing director, or managing director, pardon me, to discuss the tri-state master plan. Tell us where we're at and where we're going, timelines, things like that. We've had presentation to you previously, so this will really be more of an update, and y'all can certainly ask any questions you have of him. I know the mayor is a key player in this as well, so the mayor, mayor, you may have something to add on top of what Andrew has to share. Andrew?
Yes, sir. So just a brief update on what's taken place since last month, when city council initially discussed this idea. We have presented to Potter County and Amarillo ISD. Those meetings took place yesterday. We've also had additional meetings, one-on-one with the Potter County Judge to discuss the idea. Both meetings went really well. We had a lot of good feedback and interest in the process and participating. We're definitely going to be following up with an additional meeting with Potter County over the next few weeks. They wanted some further discussion on funding and other planning efforts to continue that conversation. Next steps, we will be having a follow-up meeting with the Tri-State Expo Board and Potter Avenue District Board, just to continue that dialogue for their participation in the project. I am also working with Emily Kohler on my staff to go ahead and start drafting an initial RFP RFQ for us to start reviewing. So once we get that finalized, we'll be able to move quickly to get that out for people to bid on and show their interest, so we can continue down the, down the process. And that will also help us finalize what the cost might actually look like, so we can then regroup with each entity to formalize the participation financially in that project. So things are moving very well, and we're hoping to continue down that process over the next month.
I would just add that in going to do these meetings with the partners, we clarify that the city doesn't own any property in that footprint. But we think it is a real opportunity for development in our city, and a very real opportunity to bring economic development around that area in restaurants, retail, hotels. It is a tourism generator in our city right now. Over 300,000 people visit the fairgrounds every year with the activities that we currently have planned and scheduled there, and the work that the venue district and the tri-state fair expo do. So they're already an economic generator in our city. What can we do to help them in the future be even more an economic generator, especially attracting tourism dollars for hot tax and self-tax dollars? Because anything we can do to alleviate the burden on property owners in paying property tax is is helpful to us. So the project is the city just simply facilitating among all of these partners and asking them, can we all invest, even putting some city dollars toward having one plan that would help coordinate the development of this area over the next 20 years? The city doesn't have a plan in mind. We just think there should be a plan, and we're willing to act as the hub for all of these different community partners, and even put some city dollars toward hiring a professional to develop that plan over the next 12 to 18 months. So just to clarify, not so much for the council, because we've previously discussed it, but for anybody who's watching the meeting, city doesn't own any property there, but city sees potential there. If we all had a plan, each one of those community partners will be making infrastructure investments as time goes on, whether it's the football stadium or the Potter County Baseball Stadium, the tri-state fairground, and the venue district. They make improvements every year to their buildings and things out there. But if they all had one plan, and they knew they were all going in the same direction, I think it, we would benefit as a community more economically, and that's really the idea behind it. Who are? I just want to brag on Andrew, too, by the way. I heard his presentation twice yesterday at both of those meetings, and I'm very proud to have Andrew on our staff, not just for his podium presentation skills, but for the work that he, the work that he does behind the scenes. It's 99% his ability to execute and get things done and then bring them and do a presentation. So I was very proud of Andrew and his work as we went to those two different meetings yesterday. Councilmember Powell?
Okay. Who are the two entities that own property out there?
Oh, so really, the main two is Potter County and Amarillo ISD, but Potter County leases to the expo to operate the majority of the land.
Okay. And when, when do you anticipate maybe visiting with the Barrio Neighborhood Association as well as the Quarter Horse Association?
Speaking about Barrio, they've, they've actually been involved in the initial discussions that helped us kind of brainstorm and kick off this idea. And I know the mayor's met with AQHA as well. So those, those conversations are already taking place.
And would there be any other neighborhood associations that are, that would be participating in this particular project right now? Because the Barrio is probably the closest one that's closest to that area, I would think.
Not that we've identified at this point, but it is kind of uniquely situated between the Barrio and the East Gateway Tears, so we'll, we'll continue to identify other stakeholders throughout that process. And we'll also want to involve the, the neighbors and the commercial district in that area, because we're really looking outside the boundary of the, the areas owned by Potter County and AISD to get a really bigger view of what could take place in that area, and also our infrastructure, make sure we have water and sewer that can serve future development, some of those, those ideas.
Right. Thank you. I'm excited about the project. I appreciate the information.
So just kind of a question. I just remember growing up, there was a refinery across the street, I think it's Philip 66 Refinery. So does Philip 66 still own that land? And is that land in a state of, it needs a lot of cleanup before it could be, something could be done with it? Because that's a pretty big amount of acreage that could have some sort of an effect over a large period of time, I would think on this.
I believe it's on my, it's on my ship run now.
Sorry, Andrew. I just wanted to identify where it is, to the northeast, is that what you're saying, Eddie?
Definitely to the east.
Yes.
I'm not so sure it's to the northeast, but yeah, to the east.
Yes. I know they, I don't know what stage it is, but they are doing remediation and some work on the site right now.
Yes, Andrew, if I could, there is a federal program in process on that property related to that refinery, so it's pretty much a difficult situation to look at in regards to development.
Oh, I'm sure it is.
We have that same question, the East Gateway Tears, because the majority of it's in that zone as well.
And Andrew, I just, one other question. Is the request for proposal, is that for a consultant or is that, okay?
Yes, for consultant. Yes, and there's some, there's many out there that specialize in fairgrounds and expo districts, so I've already received a couple of calls with people interested in submitting for it.
Okay. Anything else on that? Item 1E then is the Canadian River Municipal Water Authority update, and I know I saw Kent on the call earlier. Hi, Kent.
Hello.
Is that like buried behind you?
Yeah. Cold out there, I'm telling you. Let me see here, just one second. Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor, and City.
I was going to ask you, did the lake freeze over anywhere? I mean, is that what these pictures are showing us?
There you go.
Hey.
Can you see that? So yeah, the whole upper end of the lake froze over, the rest of it's kind of smushy. I'm sorry, there's some latency in my computer for some reason, from my network, so I may be talking over you sometimes. I apologize in advance for that. But anyway, I don't, did it get cold in Amarillo, too?
Yes.
Well, it certainly did here. It's another view of that, a little bit closer up, but on the power side of this, we have an interruptible rate with SPS. It saves us a lot of money annually. We have about an $8 million electric bill, and so having that interruptible rate helps us a lot. We keep durable, we love it, that if we run out of power, the reservoir in Amarillo is a hotspot, we can, we can continue to supply water. We keep those full just for times like this. So it's a shutdown several times during this last event, and that wasn't a problem for us at all. Our load is significant. If we were, if we were running wide open, we'd use not as much power as Pampa and Borger combined. So the general, it certainly helps us a lot, too. Anytime during this, if anybody has any questions, don't hesitate to stop me. Our water supply is solid, really because of the well field. This graph shows the chloride content of the lake. Sorry. And sorry. This graph shows the chloride content of the lake. You can see that it's trending upward. We had a big, big spike during the drought, peaked out in 12 there, nearly 1,900 parts per million chlorides. You can see this graph, the line at bottom is our state standard 300. You can also see the trend, even when you discount that, you can see that the trend is going upwards, and that's just the way it's going to be in Lake Meredith. Because of that, we blend our, blend our water, we blend about, well, this depends on the chloride content in the lake. When we got up to our very highest point, that 1,900 parts per million in 2012, we could have only put in 7% lake water. We didn't put any because just starting, stop, starting and stopping those big motors is, is just too hard on them and just not worth it for that kind of money. But right now, I mean, for that kind of water, right now, we're about 700 parts per million in the lake. We're blending about 25 parts, 20, I mean, 20 to 25% lake water. That's not always, it didn't have to be a bad thing. You can see, oops, a second, that didn't do right. You can see we had a little accident here a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, the company putting in guard rail on top of the dam, drilled into our pipeline. That's really only a three-inch hole there, but the water was blowing out about 150 feet high, something like that. We are back pumping again. We just started delivering lake water again today. The contractor's paying $180,000 bill for this repair, but we are pumping water again today. That's a good thing. And I know that was quick. I only covered a few, a few issues, but I'd be happy to try to answer any questions anybody had.
Council questions for Kent? Those pictures are fascinating, Kent. I'm, I'm really glad you brought pictures. I can't ever remember seeing the lake frozen at all. I'm sure it has been before, but.
I've been here 30 years, and this is the first time I've seen it frozen to that extent. I've seen, you know, up in the bays, frozen a little bit, but not out across the lake like that. It was just, it was just amazing.
Yeah. I snapped a picture just so I could show my parents, make sure they saw that.
Yeah, it was interesting. Not on this subject, but I'd like to publicly say how great of a job Amarillo's done in getting the COVID vaccines out. It makes me proud to be a part of this area. You guys have done great.
Well, thank you, Mr. City Manager. You say thank you on behalf of the big team that's done the work.
Absolutely, yeah. Big team appreciates those kind words to the public, sending the kind words, you know, on behalf of that team that's doing such great, long and hard work. You know, thank you. We really appreciate it.
Any other questions that y'all want to throw Kent's way? No? Okay. Kent, keep up the good work. It's, it's the slow prodding kind of work that, you know, we should be patting you on the back that says, thank you for managing all of this. We have, because of the great freeze, seeing what life would look like, not so much in the Panhandle, but in other parts of the state without some of the things we rely on every single day, like electricity and water. So thank you for standing watch on our wall that provides water for our region and for our city. We really appreciate the work that you do.
You have, thank you.
Okay. Last thing on the agenda, this portion of the agenda is item 1F, requesting future agenda items or reports from the city manager. Do you have anything here, council?
Mayor, I had a couple of items. One, I think it's a little too soon, but I want to get it on the radar for when we get some information back on just all the investigations that are going on or just kind of what happened with our electric grid. And Amarillo was very fortunate to not have near the problems the rest of the state did. But as we gather that information to hold a spot for getting information back, like from our state legislators or reports from our utility providers, to just explain everything that has been found and identified and corrections that are, that are being made. And then number two is I wanted to request just a work agenda item to look at our downtown parking garage revenue numbers as well as our on-street parking and have just a chance to kind of look at that, look at the trends, look at the numbers, and have a conversation about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead. I had one clarification question on the, on the first item, Councilor Baze. What I have is to provide an update at some point on the analysis that's going to take place regarding failures or last week with regard to electric power. Now, what I wrote down was with regard, the analysis that will take place regarding ERCOT, because I don't think an analysis is going to be done by the state on SPP, which is our, our grid, or on, I think there's one or two other grids that touch small parts of the state, like El Paso and the far, far east Texas is on a different grid. So you're wanting to know the analysis, the state is going, an update on the analysis that the state is going to conduct regarding ERCOT, is that correct?
Well, I'd be interested in other feedback from council if they think that it would be of public interest on the whole state or really if it is just specifics of things that affected us in the Panhandle.
For the area in regards to Southwestern Public Service Company, we are a part of the Southwest Power Pool and have been for many years, which is a great decision that, that we made. And I don't remember, remember the exact dates, but it was probably in the, maybe the 80s or 90s, somewhere in there, but I think that Southwestern Public Service Company, Excel Energy, has done a great job, especially last week, in, in helping us get through the, the winter storm. So I, I think the biggest issues are with ERCOT. That, that's just my opinion. That affected the, the entire, I guess, south of the entire state. So is that, do I see Mr. Ronnie Walker on?
Yes, you do. Yes. If, if I could say a few things.
You guys, and I know this is, but I'm probably looking at Brian, who is saying, this is not really on our agenda to talk about. So Ronnie, I love that you're on our call because you do have an agenda item that's not ERCOT specific related.
Yeah, but I just, I just want to say this, that we are definitely working on a presentation to be able to go around and, and to visit with companies and with people that are interested. And, you know, we learned a lot on this deal. I mean, we learned a lot. Who would have ever thought the whole 74% of the United States was going to freeze, below freezing for a week in the whole state of Texas? So that a lot of things, we've got a lot of good information, but we're going to put together a presentation, I hope to bring it to the council.
Wonderful. Okay.
Ronnie's presentation, for sure. Based on what I'm hearing, we're going to focus on an analysis of what happened in our area that we can have Excel present or Ronnie present or whoever, Ronnie, you want to have do that, but have that, have y'all present that to tell us what happened in our city and in our area.
And I'm sure we'll talk on, I mean, it will talk about statewide supply, which affected us here in the Panhandle area, but. Okay. Great. Glad you were on for this, Ronnie. That was helpful. Okay. Anybody else have agenda items? Okay. Let's take a bathroom break real quick and try to come right back and finish up the rest of our agenda before we go to executive session as quickly as we can. Okay? Five minutes. Thank y'all. Okay. I think we're ready to pick back up with the consent agenda. Anything on there, council, that needs to come off for questions or discussion? Okay, hearing nothing. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve the items on the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3A is to consider a resolution authorizing the city of Amarillo to submit the fiscal year 2022 grant application for the Project Safe Neighborhood Program. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. We have, this is a FY22 Project Safe Neighborhood application that would provide resources for regional real-time crime center. It's an application that would be made to the Office of the Governor. You recently saw an FY21, 2021 application, a retroactive application for funding that they made available to us just a few weeks ago. So not to be confused with that one, this is another application for funds that will be provided to us through the Office of Governor as another component of Project Safe Neighborhood Program. We have Deputy City Manager Kevin Starbuck and Police Chief Martin Birkenfeld available to answer any questions council might have.
Any questions? All right, doesn't look like we have any, Chief. Thank you for joining us, though. Do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve the resolution to authorize the city of Amarillo to submit Project 4088002, Regional Real-Time Crime Center, to the Office of the Governor through the fiscal year 2022 Project Safe Neighborhood Grant Program. And that's going to be in the amount of $105,000 for equipment.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve this grant application. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3B is to consider a resolution regarding, well, I won't read it all, you guys can read it all, it's really long there, but it's about a rate, a rate increase in, for Excel Utilities. So, Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. I'm going to walk us through a pretty detailed explanation on item B, which is a surcharge related to a Excel rate case. The item C is also dealing with a different rate case with Excel. So I want to walk you through this. Ronnie Walker's on the call as well. Be important to note, and this is a very, anytime we deal with Excel rate cases, we're going to walk through these types of explanations. We always have Ronnie Walker or somebody else from Excel with us on these calls or meetings, because it's important for everyone to know that we are partners and we recognize each other as vital and critical partners for each other's success. That said, the, the discussion on rates and how you set rates is always something that's very complicated. We use consultants to, to help us through that. And, and because we are going through rate cases, does not, it should not be interpreted as a, a difficult relationship or anything untoward with regard to how we work with Excel. We are very critical partners with each other. We know that and we recognize that, and nothing says it more than last week. So let me walk us through item B. Item B is a surcharge that's authorized as a result of the 2019 rate case that was filed by Excel in September of 2018. I'm sorry, in September of 2019. It didn't receive final resolution through the PUC until September, until late in August of, or maybe September 1st of 2020. So the rate that was approved by the PUC on September 1st, 2020, is then retroactively applied through a reachback, which is what this surcharge allows Excel to, to recover the revenue that would have been received if they had applied the rate that was approved in September of 2020, throughout that entire time, from the time they submitted the rate change request in September of 2019. So that's somewhat confusing, but it has nothing to do with any, it does not pay for any previous rate case projects, which would include wind farms and other things, nor does it have anything to do with our current rate case, which is what we're going to be discussing in item C. So that's somewhat confusing. Ronnie does a great job of explaining any, any questions you might have. I've also got a number of people on the city that have been working on these projects, including City Attorney Brian McWilliams and Assistant City Manager Laura Storrs, myself, and anybody else that's, that's needed for any questions. So is there any questions that I, Ronnie, or anybody else can answer for you?
So just to clarify that, let me restate it and see if I understand it correctly. So it sounds like when a rate proposal is brought forward and then negotiations begin, there's kind of like a marker put down that says, okay, here's the starting point, and while we work through all these issues, it allows then a point to go back, not before that, but at that starting point of when negotiations had begun on that rate request, say, this is what we settled on, this is the new rate, and this is when it becomes effective, so that it, it builds time in for both sides that you have actually, when that rate's agreed upon, that you're able to go back and apply it retroactively. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Let me just, let me just say that, okay, the 2019 case, we filed it August the 8th of 2019, and then 35 days after that, after the filing date, which was September the 12th of 2019, that is that date where we mark as the starting of this reachback period, September the 12th. So we actually settled in August, but we, the new rates went into effect September 1st of 2020, okay? So that period from September the 12th of 19 to August the 31st of 2020, which is one day before the rates went into effect, that's the reachback period. And, and those rates that are approved actually goes to the kilowatt hours used over that period of time plugged in and comes up with, with that number, which was 70, 71.5 million or something like that. And that's going to be implemented in a 12-month period, starting April 1st, 2021, to March 31st, 2022.
So this will go away?
Yes. Then it goes away.
Definitely a complicated process about a complicated subject.
It is.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here to answer questions, Ronnie.
Thanks. And one thing, I just want to, Excel, we really appreciate you guys, the city and our community partners last week, working through that storm, the conservation efforts that, that we asked and you guys did. It was, you know, it kept us, it kept us from having some extended outages that we would have had. And so we come out pretty good on that deal. And so we come out pretty good on that deal, but it wouldn't have been without the community stepping up, our community partner stepping up. And, you know, that's, that's what always happens when, in Amarillo, when there's a time of need, people step up. So, thank y'all.
Well said, and we would pat you guys on the back as well. All those guys that go out to work the lines in the wee hours of the night and the morning and, and the sub-zero temperatures and the high winds and the wet conditions and all of that. You know, we, all we do is walk over and flip on the switch. We don't often stop and thank you for the dangers that they face in making our switches effective. And definitely those conditions are very dangerous and guys stepped up and, and were working that situation. I'll also just thank you for the partnership relationally that our organization, the city, has with Excel. And I saw that on display in multiple meetings last week as we were cruising through the storm. But part of the reason why it was an effective ask out to the community who did a great job of conserving energy was because those partnerships were in place and y'all could transparently, you know, give the information and there were good conduits there for it and we could conduit that information out to citizens. So thank you for the work that you do to build that relationship and maintain that relationship, both with our emergency operations folks and city manager and Kevin Starbuck and everybody under his watch in the city. Those, those relationships have to be there when we need them in a crisis, but they don't just pop up. They're there because you guys do a good job building and maintaining them when, when it's not.
So does the city. So the, the city does also. They do an awesome job. I mean, they're definitely our, our favorite partner for sure. I mean, they're always there when we need them. All we got to do is call, so. And same here.
Mayor, I wanted to, if I could, I'd like to add just a little bit on top of what you said, that, you know, it's not just Ronnie. We had Brad Baldridge, who's a key person on the operations side for Excel, in our emergency operations center for days and in the evening sometimes on the phone texting us updates on what's going on with the power grid here. We also had David Hudson personally giving us calls, who's, you know, the, the main person in charge out at Excel here in Amarillo. And, and so at every level, we really appreciate it. And then beyond that, we all recognize the sacrifices that the men and women make up your team made out in deadly cold weather, taking care of infrastructure that failed as a result of the ice. And it wasn't a lot, but that's tough work. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Counsel, do we have a, go ahead, Howard. Yes?
I just want to say thank you also. I have a son in Dallas, had a totally different experience than Amarillo. Had a totally different experience. When it's forty degrees in the house for over twenty-four hours, that gets pretty tough. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. They have some extended outages for sure. I'm just glad we didn't. We, we lucked out on the ice situation. We didn't have the ice. We had the extreme cold. And it kind of, it wasn't a gradual, it, it just like flipping a switch. It got cold. And that, that helped us more than anything because ice kills us, ice cripples us, cripples a power company. Nothing like it, nothing worse. So we lucked out on that, that fact, but we learned a lot too. And we will be sharing it with you guys. Looking forward to that.
Thank you, Ronnie. Okay, do we have a motion, counsel, on this item?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve the resolution approving the surcharge related to docket number forty-nine eight thirty-one submitted by Southwestern Public Service Company on or about December eighteenth, 2020, authorizing participation in a correlation of similarly situated cities known as the Alliance of Excel Municipalities, authorizing participation in related rate proceedings, requiring the reimbursement of municipal rate case expenses and authorizing the retention of, of a special counsel.
Been moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve item three B. Any further discussion or questions from the council? All those in favor, please raise your hand. I see five hands. That motion passes with the five oh vote. Item three C, Mr. City Manager?
Hey, Mayor. SPS has filed a, and this is regarding our current rate case that was filed on February eighth of 2021. We have ninety days to either suspend or deny. Otherwise, the, the, the rate request would go into effect as, as submitted to the City of Amarillo and the PUC. There's a number of cities that this rate, this rate case has been submitted to, in addition to the PUC, in addition to the City of Amarillo. We have options to either deny or suspend, as I mentioned. We are recommending that we suspend the rate case application so that we can, as we have in the past two rate cases since I've been here, work with SPS and through consultants to fully understand the rate case request and negotiate that request to the best, to best serve our rate payers here in Amarillo. Ronnie, is there anything else I need to add there?
No, Jared, of course, we can't talk about too much, but no, it's, that was filed February the eighth. We filed that. Now, March fifteenth, is that effective date for this?
Correct.
Yeah, for this filing. So we'll be, you know, whatever happens, we'll surcharge on it later. So when it settles, but. No, great job, Jared.
The recommendation is to suspend. This is the recommendation that has been sent to us by our consultant who works with us on these items. It is consistent with what we've done in previous rate cases. So I, I or Ronnie or anybody else can answer any questions you might have, understanding that Ronnie is somewhat limited in what he can say because of his role in this, at, at this point.
Let me just say that we do have eighty-one communities, eighty-one cities, and they have original jurisdiction over the rates, SPS rates. So each one of these eighty-one cities has to do the same thing. They have to take this before the council. And most of the time, we recommend that they, the smaller communities, we recommend they deny it because then they don't have to go back and do anything else. If you suspend it, it gives you ninety days, but you still have to act on it in ninety days. You have to go in and deny. You don't want to prove it. If you ever prove it, then the rates as submitted automatically go into effect then. So I don't think, I've never heard of anybody that's done that, so. It's not a good deal, but anyway.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion with regard to item three C?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve the resolution suspending the effective date of Southwestern Public Service Company's proposed increase in rates and allowed by statute declaring temporary rates, authorizing the city's continued participation, participation with other cities in the Alliance of Excel Municipalities to direct the activities of lawyers and consultants.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve item three C. Do we have any further discussion or questions from the council? Hearing none. All of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, passes with the five oh vote. Thanks again for being with us, Ronnie.
Man, thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Item three D is a report in considering the receiving and accepting of the comprehensive annual financial report. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. We had a presentation to the city's audit committee last week on the sixteenth from our finance department as well as our auditor. Janie Arnold is on the call, so I'm going to throw it to Laura Storrs first, our Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, to make any introductory comments, and then to hand it over to Janie, Laura, or to do the presentation yourself. We've got Janie here to answer questions. I can't remember who, which of y'all is doing the presentation. But it was a long, very exhaustive and extensive and in-depth meeting last week to go through our annual financial report. Laura?
All right. Thank you, Jared. And maybe first want to start with a big thank you to the audit committee. They ventured out in the snow and the cold weather to come up to City Hall and sit through about an hour and a half presentation related to our financials. So Dr. Sauer and Councilmember Hayes, we really appreciate you all. Y'all are such troopers for coming out and helping us meet our deadlines related to these audited financial statements. These statements, they're about a three-hundred-page document, and to go through them and hit the highlights, we were go, we were moving very quickly in an hour and a half, but think that we covered some great ground and answered a lot of very good questions that came up through it. So I'm going to share a quick presentation here and wanted just to start out with maybe a, some more thank yous related to our audited financial statements. We have a, a large team that works on our financials all year long. And then, as you know, we are now in February talking about financial statements that ended on September thirtieth of 2020. So we have been working with auditors nonstop since September, trying to close out the books, make final adjustments, and present audited financial statements. So a big thank you to Debbie Reed, who is our new Finance Director. She came actually right at the end of our fiscal year, but was involved in our audit process. Thank you to Valerie Coonert, who is our City Auditor, and Matt Poston, who is our Assistant City Auditor. Those two and their team were instrumental in putting together all of our audited financial statements. We have about twelve degreed accountant positions, and included in that is four CPAs, and we're always looking to expand that. So have a lot of expertise here at the city, which really helps this audit go smoothly. We also want to thank Janie Arnold. She's on this call as well. She is the partner with CMMS CPAs and advisors, and she is in charge of the city's audit. And she had a large team that worked as well. And this year was different because they were working remotely, but we all feel like it went very well. It was a new experience for us. We learned a lot and learned a lot of efficiencies that can even be achieved with them working remotely and us just sending more things through an electronic means. So it was certainly a learning experience this year. The CAFR, and each of the council members should have a copy of the CAFR. There's a couple of items in it that I want to go over. We did tab these drafted financial statements, and then there is, it's kind of like a cheat sheet inside your audited financial statements there. It gives you some highlights on each of those numbered tabs throughout your financial statements. Once these are approved by council, we will put an electronic copy on the city's website and have a link out there that the citizens can go and look through this document as well. There's some great information in it. So the first thing I wanted to cover is that our CAFR receives the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, and we have received it forty-four years in a row. And so we've had a long experience, we've had a long, successful experience with our audited financial statements in meeting the standards put out by the GFOA, and we will be submitting this CAFR as well for that same award. Inside your audited financial statements, there is, on the first page in the actual document, page one, there is a financial statement opinion, and that is probably one of the most important items related to these financial statements. We received an unmodified, which is a clean opinion. That is the best opinion that you can receive from your auditor. So we are really excited to report that. There's also a letter that was included in your financial statements in that front cover as well, and it's a report on internal controls over financial reporting. And it discloses that there is, there's no findings of noncompliance that the auditors found. At the very back of your audited financial statements, we included a copy of our single audit report. There is a separate audit that's done over all of our state and federal grant awards. You will notice as you flip through this, we received, or we spent forty-five point seven million dollars last fiscal year in federal and state grant expenditures. And so the auditors have separate audit processes that are put in place to audit those expenditures. And you will see there's also a compliance, a report on compliance and internal controls over the major programs. And we also received an unmodified, which is a clean opinion on our single audit. So with that, again, a very high-level overview of our financial statements. I will stop sharing my screen now and ask council if you have any questions for us or if Janie, if y'all have any questions for Janie Arnold. She is also on this call with us as well.
Counsel, questions? Councilmember Hayes, comments?
Dr. Sauer and I got to meet Debbie Reed in person for the first time. That was nice to, you know, with all the COVID, we just hadn't been able to officially face-to-face welcome her, and she was a great part of the team, having there at the table and just hearing her, her feedback as well, just also being able to compare to some other cities. And it was very encouraging hearing her take on how our financials compare to a lot of other cities. And, you know, our, our finances are just really strong. Our debt ratios, our unfunded liabilities that just are so, in such excellent financial, financial position that helped us keep that bond rating during very uncertain times. And those are things that, you know, Mayor, you talk so much about looking long-term and setting policies in place, and these are policies that have been in place in our finance department for decades, and it, it paid off in a crisis. And it's, it, it's very comforting seeing the team and who Jared has built back and put back together this new team going forward to continue, to continue on the same track.
Dr. Sauer, anything you want to add to that?
You know, one of the things that I would add to that was that I would piggyback off of really what Elaine said was, you know, there's been some talk about the hot tax and about how the hot tax had dropped off significantly because hotel occupancy, you know, basically plummeted during the height of the COVID thing during last year. But the interesting thing is, is even at our worst, the debt coverage didn't even come close to what was considered the minimum. So our debt coverage, it just is a, it's another precedent, or it's another way to say that the accounting department, that the city has done an incredibly good job of, yes, we made this investment in Hottstown, and we said that we would do well even if things got bad. And so guess what? Things got bad, and we didn't even come close to what the minimum would be required in an effort for us to keep, keep our triple-A bond rating. So that's very impressive. You know, we're going to be moving forward. The sky's going to be the limit at this point in time. So I just like seeing the fact that we had some difficulties that we faced. Our financial department and everybody here at the city, they had things already in place. They had everything in place so that we did not have to worry. And that's one of the things that I want the citizens to realize, you don't have to worry, is that we have everything taken in place and taken care of, and we are very much in the black, and we are very much moving forward. I was very impressed with sitting through this. My head swam for a little bit, trying to figure out all the stuff that they were saying. And, but the end result was, it was very comforting to find out that we are in an incredibly strong position coming out of COVID and starting 2021, and it will be a very productive year for the city.
That our, our policies are strong, our systems are strong, and individuals. But then also, it just reflected the strength of our local economy. That was very encouraging, just seeing how we had rebounded so quickly and how some of our numbers came back up. And it was, oh, I, I remember there was one other thing that stood out to me that there is a rotation process too, of where they do, on just a rotating basis each year, they do a deep dive on top of all the other audit and just really with fine tooth comb, going through different departments, and that, it's very, I like that system. I like the rotation and the, the fact that above and beyond already the audit process we're doing of how that rotation works to look. of how that rotation works to look at individual departments in a cycle.
Good comments. Well, I will echo what Laura said. The rest of the council appreciates the work that the two of you did to serve on the audit committee, and we appreciate your time. We appreciate your expertise, both of you guys. Enjoy working with numbers, and so we're thankful that you're willing to do this duty for us. Any other questions from council or questions for Janie? Janie, thank you for being with us today, and we appreciate the fact that you and your firm take this on for us every year and do a great job, even amidst the year of changing and doing things virtually this year.
And I also would like to thank everyone that assisted us with the audit.
It's a team effort, isn't it?
It definitely is.
Yeah. Well, Councilmember Sauer, Councilmember Hayes, either one of you want to make a motion on this item?
Elaine, you want to go ahead? Because I don't have it sitting in front of me right now. I've got to figure out where I left it.
I can do it, Mayor.
Okay, go. I don't know how to do that without Frida jumping in. It's like, wait, wait, I need to read this paper.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead.
I, I stopped.
Mayor, I move to approve receiving and accepting the City of Amarillo Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ending September 30th, 2020.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Hayes to approve and to receive and accept the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ending 2020. Any further discussion or questions about the motion? Hearing none, the, if you're in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, passes with the 5-0 vote. Janie, thank you. I don't know how much time you take off before you start working on it again, but probably not much, given the size of the project.
Well, again, thank you.
Laura, we appreciate the work that you and your team and Debbie, Matt, everything you guys do to keep us on track. What Councilwoman Hayes said about how it saves us money and what Dr. Sauer said about how it builds trust with our citizens, both of which are very important. You know, the AAA bond rating saved citizens almost $2 million just in our 2016 bond issuances. So we're able to get projects done for less money because of the work that y'all do day in and day out and year over year. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. I know the team takes a lot of pride in the work they do, and it makes me very honored to be a part of that team.
Yeah, they should. We're proud of them too. Item 3E is to discuss and consider the sale of real estate located at Farmer's Avenue and South Georgia Street to XL Energy. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. As you said, this is to consider the approval of sale of AEDC land that's adjacent to a larger tract of land owned by AEDC. And this sale is going to facilitate future development of this area. We have President and CEO of AEDC, Kevin Carter, with us. Kevin, can you, there he is. Kevin, take it away.
Mayor, counsel, thank you, Jared. This agenda item would be to discuss and consider the sale of real estate located at Farmer's Avenue and South Georgia Street to XL Energy. This is a picture of the property, kind of gives you an overview. We own 195 acres. This is our South Georgia Business Park in Randall County. We purchased that land in 2019 at a price of $19,724 per acre. XL came to us a few months back and asked about purchasing a couple of acres to expand the substation that currently is in the green shaded area. And so the piece of land that they're looking at, that they would purchase, is the blue shaded area. That would give us the, or give XL the capacity to expand, capacity to that business park and also to the residents, residents that are around that area. So XL, we propose a price of $20,000 per acre, so $40,000 total purchase price for the two acres that XL is proposing to buy.
Any questions about that, counsel?
And Mayor, the AEDC Board voted yesterday on a 5-0 vote to approve the sale.
Okay. We don't have any questions for the EDC team. Do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to authorize the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation to execute a contract and all necessary documents for the sale of approximately two acres of land located at Farmer's Avenue and South Georgia Street in Amarillo, Texas, to XL Energy to expand their substation. And that would be in the amount of $40,000 plus closing cost and related expenses.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve item 3E. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. That passes with the 5-0 vote. EDC team, thank you. We'll see you over in executive session. At this time, this completes our agenda for non-executive session items, and I would request the city attorney to read our special language.
Glad to, Mayor. So the Texas Open Means Act closed session in the Amarillo City Council was announced on February the 23rd, 2021 at 3:06 PM under the following authority, section 551.072, to discuss the purchase exchange, lease-sell of valuable property, public discussion, such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position. Section 551.074, discuss the appointment, appointment and valuation due to the public officer or employee. Section 551.087, discuss commercial financial information received from existing business or business prospect, with which the city is negotiating for the location or retention of a facility, or for incentives, the city is willing to extend the financial information submitted by the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we appreciate your tuning in for our meeting today, and we return to executive session.